Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. I was keeping note, this meeting is being recorded. We typically start our meetings with an introduction. Mr. Solicitor, let's start up here today.
Great. Rick Brown, Elk County Solicitor.
Greg Gabor, Elk County Commissioner.
Chris Slicker, Commissioner.
Corey Mann, Lieutenant Commissioner.
Ash Robb, Elk County Chief Clerk.
Emily Anders, Office Administrator.
Alvin Moore, IT Director.
Gerald Coll, Director of Veterans Bears.
Barb Swanson, Taxpayer.
Kathy McClellan, Elk County Planning.
Merrill Sico, The Courier Express and The Daily Press.
Courtney Pyle with Dickinson.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's with a heavy heart that I announce the passing of one of our Elk County employees. We had a 911 dispatcher who passed away about a week ago or a little more. Let's just take a moment of silence in remembrance of Mr. Mason, new writer. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Before us, we have an agenda. After reviewing of the agenda, I look for a motion to approve the agenda or offering correct directions.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion at second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. We also have before us a copy of the minutes of October 16, 2025 Commissioners Meeting. After review, I look for a motion to approve those as presented. As motion second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Under presentations, presentation number one, we have a proclamation for National Teachers Parents as Teachers. Parents as Teachers Day, which is November the 8th, so that will be this Saturday. So today we have Ms. Courtney Pyle from Dickinson Center. Courtney, do want to tell us a little bit about this, please?
Yes, so Dickinson offers Parents as Teachers, which is one of the three organizations that offer parents as teachers. So we all are celebrating that this weekend. And what we're doing is Parents as Teachers Evidence-Based Home Visiting Program, designed to help support families in their home. Parents have such an important job. They're their child's first and most influential teacher, and it's the only job that you do not get a manual for. And we want to be their supports, their advocates, and their encouragers. And that's our job as parent educators to help support, encourage, and empower parents in such an important role. Children get to work, we get to work with families and their children here in Elk County until the child goes off to kindergarten. So we're working with them in a wide span. Our average rate of length of involvement in our program is about three years, which is incredible. Their goal for Parents as Teachers is two years, and we're working with them for three years. Last year, we were able to service a total of 309 families in Elk County along with 507 children, which is just incredible that we're able to help support and encourage all of those children in our program. I won't talk too long. I have some information in front of each of you today that if you would ever have any questions about our program, please don't hesitate to reach out. We are very thankful for this proclamation to help recognize across Elk County. We are also, this is our second time going through the Blue Ribbon Affiliate, which is the highest designation that you can receive. So at Dickinson, for a second time, we are providing the highest quality of services to families in Elk County. So we're very passionate about what we do, and it's really rewarding to see that National Center is also recognizing that the great work that we're doing is making a difference.
So thank you, Courtney. Let's give her a round of applause. Because I'm a Blue Ribbon Affiliate, that's really nice. That speaks multitudes to your leadership. So we have a proclamation, I'll read in part. Pennsylvania Parents as Teachers World of Support Day, November 8, 2025. Whereas all young children and their families deserve equitable access to opportunities to succeed regardless of demographic, geographic, or economic factors. And parents are their children's first and most influential teachers, and the early years of life are critical for optimal development. Whereas Parents as Teachers is federally recognized and internationally implemented, evidence-based home visiting model, offering a cohesive package of strengths-based services for families with young children framed around four dynamic components: personal visits, group connections, child screenings, and resource network. Whereas Parents as Teachers through Dickinson Center in Elk County is a Blue Ribbon Affiliate and is an effective parent support and early childhood education program, and may be within family support, health, education, human service, and family-centered organizations, which are part of a community network of providers and served over 500 children from the prenatal period through the time children enter school into 2024-25 school year. Now therefore, the County of Elk Commissioners designates the day, November 8, 2025, as Parents as Teachers World of Support Day in Elk County. So congratulations again on your designation. And you always brighten our meetings up when you're here, Courtney.
I appreciate it. It's a team effort. I didn't recognize that. My staff, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them.
It's a big group, doesn't it?
Sure that.
So next, we have a proclamation. Oh, yes. So I'd look for a motion that we approve this proclamation, National Parents as Teachers Day. Look for a motion. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for Operation Green Light for Veterans. Commissioner Please-A-Merry, would you like to speak to that? Or do we?
Well, I will. What I'll do is I'll read our proclamation and I'll turn it over to Chief Clerk. Give us a little background, but we'll take action.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 proclamation. Whereas the residents of the County of Elk have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the County of Elk seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And I'll go to the end here, it may be interesting time. Now therefore, be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, the County of Elk hereby declares November 4 through November 11, 2025, the time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that the County of Elk encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4 through November 11, 2025, given under our hands on the sixth day of November, 2025. So thank you, Jerry, for being here.
You're welcome. Operation Green Light is a nationwide program that runs from November 4 to the 11th. This is the fifth year of it, and it is a way for the county government officials and the community to show support and appreciation for their county's veterans by shining green lights in the front of the buildings or in their windows. It's a way to show that we support our veterans and appreciate it.
Thank you. Not unlike what we would see for the blue lights for our armed forces and things like that. And I have actually noticed even on St. Bruce Street. You will see these green lights out there in the community, and so it's a wonderful thing to see, but also to participate in it if you're able to as well. So a week from yesterday, a week from Tuesday next to the 11th, it's going to be Veterans Day. Sometimes it gets a little lost between Halloween and Thanksgiving. We forget about, it's an important time to reflect on what sacrifices are that the veterans provide to help ensure we enjoy the liberties that we have. So thank you for that. So with that, if there's nothing further, I would ask the Chair for a motion for the proclamation.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I ask for a motion that we approve Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 proclamation. We have motion and second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. And thanks, Jerry, for being here. We appreciate that. Okay. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution number 2025-09. This is for the 25-26 Fair PA Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement. And PHFA, which is PA Housing Finance Agency, request for proposal. That's honestly multiple. Today, we have our administrator of these programs, Kathy McClellan here from our planning department. Kathy, thanks for being here. For yours, if you have a few words you want to say.
Yeah, I'm applying for $100,000 to help support qualifying seniors 62 years of age and older or those homeowners with a disability. I get so many calls that they need stairlifts, ramps, accessible bathrooms, removal of barriers, and this money really helps those low-income seniors with their modifications. I lot, like $15,000 for each homeowner. And the contractors I work with, they are really good within keeping it, keeping it within those costs.
Did a tremendous job with the program, so we thank you for that.
Yeah, people, we get a lot of calls.
I'm sure. So this is, these are both income-based programs. It's a lot of, what's the word?
Mr. Solicitor.
A lot of private information, a lot of constitutional, personal, yes, some goes into it. So thank you for handling that. So as part of the application process, county needs to pass this resolution. Is that correct? Okay, and we've been participating in these, both these programs for a few years now, correct?
At least eight years, I think.
The resolution number 2025-9, resolution of the County of Elk authorizing the filing of a proposal through the Elk County Planning Department for Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Funds within the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agencies within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas the County of Elk is desirous of obtaining funds from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund in the amount of $100,000 for the Elk County Accessibility Modifications, Housing Rehabilitation, and Slum and Flight Remediation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Port of Elk County Commissioners that the proposed project funds will be utilized by the Elk County Planning Department for housing programs. Be it further resolved that the County of Elk will assume the provision of the full share, full local share of the project cost of hurtable. Be it further resolved that the chairperson of the Elk County Board of Commissioners is directed to execute a certificate attesting to the adoption of this resolution and to furnish a copy of the resolution to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agencies. So. Thank you. Thank you. So I'd look for a motion to approve this resolution number 2025-9. I will make that motion. Look for a second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. Next, we have resolution number 2025-10, which is ratification of a resolution lifting the burn restrictions in Elk County.
Whereas on the third day of October, 2025, the Commissioners of the County of Elk adopted Resolution 2025-08, establishing a temporary burn ban due to dry weather conditions and lack of rainfall. Whereas the burn ban was put in place to protect public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of County of Elk to reduce the risk of brush, blodland, and forest fires. And recent weather conditions, including significant rainfall, have substantially reduced the fire danger in the county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County of Elk Commissioners that the burn ban implemented by Resolution 2025-08 is hereby rescinded effective immediately. Further, we remind all residents that this rescindment does not supersede or alter any existing municipal ordinances regarding open burning that are permanently in effect. Residents are urged to continue practicing safe burning practices and to exercise caution when engaging in any outdoor burning activities. Resolved this, and this was the, actually last week, the 27th day of October, 2025, County Commissioners, Elk County.
So we are looking to ratify this resolution, rescinding of a temporary burn ban. Look for motion to do that? Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. New old business. Under new business, new business number one, renewal of our health insurance contract between the County of Elk and Delaware Valley Health Trust or Dibbit for the county's employee health plan for calendar year 2026. The total cost is $1,875,525. So the net cost is $1,828,739. The increase for 2026 was 9.7% prior to applying earned credits of $46,786. The Elk County slash Dibbit Healthcare Plan is part of a large self-insured group risk sharing pool designed only for public entities. Includes wellness programs, legal guidance, and loss control resources. County employees pay up to 15% for the number of services they're allowed to coverage. So we have our Chief Clerk here today, Patrick Strah. I would like to commend Pat Strah for the work he's done. As we all know, the world of health insurance is a deep murky fire liar on the best of days. So Pat has worked tirelessly. We were quoted a rate increase between 8 and 12%. I serve on the Board of the Office of Human Services. I think their quoted increase was 36%. But our county, under Pat's direction, we take advantage of every program we can to save, save money. We earn credits by doing certain things. So thanks, Pat, for that. You and Kerry do a great job. So I'll give you the floor if there's anything you'd like to add.
Again, when healthcare renewal rolls around, it's sort of creates a little bit of angst because you never know where you're going to be. Healthcare cost is the second, is the largest single cost component of the county's budget next to payroll itself. And it's about actually 25% of the total compensation, which is so, really, it's a major investment in our employees, but it's something that helps us attract talent to the county because healthcare for many of our employees is a very important part of their compensation package. Yeah, we knew the increase was coming. The last four years, we've paid an average of 4.8%. Last year was 6.4%, so increasing a little bit. But as Fritz mentioned, the national average for 2026 is about between 9 and 10%. In terms of the cost, we're under, we're bound by labor contract to pay 85% of the cost of the premium. And the employees, so therefore, the employee would pay 15%. We, we do offer an incentive for not collecting the healthcare plan. Some choose to do what they can not to, not to get on the county's plan. So we offer $150 a month for those that do not opt to go into our plan. And we have a number of employees who do that. Delaware Valley Trust is very good to us. Their specialty is insuring public entities. They have 160 public entities, great wellness programs, and a lot of things going for them. A lot of counties do utilize them, and we've always had great success in luck with Delaware Valley. So I would recommend the program.
Thank you. Ash Robb, is it true that you also serve on their board?
No, in Delaware Valley, the CCAP portion, the Health Alliance. There's a small group, group pool within a large group pool, and I serve on the Health Alliance board.
We appreciate that as well.
If I could, I think it's helpful to echo the comments that you made, that we don't just accept those at face value. I think Pat does a great job turning over every rock, so that we look for every, every possible way to mitigate those costs first. And then this is the big reveal at the end. So it's, it's, sometimes I think just people think of being, and we just say, okay, that's all right. We'll just accept that increase, pay it, and move on. But I know we get to this point because you've done everything you could to try to look around and figure out how can we make things better? How can we improve our expenses without tipping it over too much to put too much burden on the employees? So thank you for the work for that. Thank you.
Anything else? Look for a motion to red, or to accept this renewal of the health insurance contract. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. New business number two, ratification of a memorandum of understanding between the County of Elk and UMWA Local 8923 regarding the additional healthcare plan option for employees in the Commissioners' residual party. Turn the floor over to Mr. Chief Clerk.
This year, as part of the renewal, we decided to change it up a little bit and had a very high deductible option, the thinking being that some of the employees that don't utilize healthcare as much as maybe others might take advantage of the lower premiums. When I say lower, the county actually pays 100% of the premium. The employee pays nothing. It's really a win-win because the county is paying, and that lower premium for that employee coverage, and the employee is paying nothing. So they're taking a bit of a gamble with a higher deductible option, but some who are healthy and not going to the doctor, I mean, that's, that's a beneficial choice for them. The memorandum of understanding is necessary because currently that isn't an option in the current union contracts. So we have one contract settled, which is the Commissioners' residual. So we established a memorandum of understanding with that particular bargaining unit. The other two contracts have not been settled at this point. So they're sort of been limbo, but they would be extended as well in arbitration, I suspect.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Any other questions, information?
Follow that. This is a sort of choose-your-own-adventure thing. Pay a little bit more in your premiums, a little bit less in your deductible. Or you pay less in your premiums, and you roll the dice, and you hope you don't get sick because then you're going to get healed back in with your higher deductible. But again, it's, we don't want to say to anybody, you only have one choice. You do have a couple of choices. If that more money in your pocket makes sense for your situation, then thankfully, we have that as an option as of how risk averse you are.
Thank you. Look for a motion to ratify the MOU between the County of Elk and UMWA Local 8923. The motion. And second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. New business number three, request from IT for ratification of a new contract with Center for Internet Security from September 24-25 through September 23, 26, 26. Okay, and an annual rate of $995. We have Mr. Calvin Moore here from our IT department. Calvin?
Yes, so this is basically kind of handed over to us, what's going on with the budget. It used to be paid through, through the state by the counties would just sign off that they would want to renew it. Nothing was ever paid out of county's pocket now. They don't have a plan for the future, so most likely, it's going to be like this. We have what's called an Albert sensor, a server room to monitor all of our traffic. In order to continue using those services, you need to have this on the chip. So it kind of go hand in hand, so it is a need, things that we got to work out of our pocket, but.
So this is something that the state would cover typically, but because the state is shut down, counties are forced to pay. Have you had any correspondence from the state about it, or just an invoice from the vendor?
The only word that they gave out was basically, if you would like to continue the service, then you have to pay the membership fee. They have not given any date of when they decide to give us, there's no word of reimbursement either. It's basically, if you want it, you pay for it. CCAP, I know it's actively working on getting more information from them, and they're also working to try and get reimbursement for counties that have it.
So this was a surprise.
It was. We always have the same renewal date in October, but like I said, it's always paid out of the state. We were told, I think, a week before our renewal date, the state would not pick up that.
Couldn't say a bad word right here, but I'm not going to. Another surprise. Okay, so what's your recommendation that we approve this repayment?
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you. I look for a motion. And second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We do have a few pieces of correspondence. They are available at the Commissioners' office if anybody would like to review them. Under good of the county, we welcome and encourage the public to attend our meetings. Mr. Commissioner Please-A-Merry?
Just wanted to acknowledge the work of our Elections Department. This week, obviously, Tuesday was countywide election, a lot of work that goes into that. Always thank him because it means we're out of the national news, which is always the goal. Also, our poll workers, a long day for them. There's 29% to 31%. I don't know how many we have. It's a lot. A lot of people, our maintenance crew that takes the machines. There's a lot that happens just to make that day go off as smoothly as possible. So just want to recognize the work that we get from all those folks to help us with our election.
Thank you. Echo those sentiments. Next, we have recognition of National First Responder Day on October 28th. Mr. Gomauer is a long-time first responder himself. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, so October 28th was National First Responders Day, and it recognizes the first responders, including all law enforcement, sheriff personnel, 911 dispatchers, ambulance personnel, and fire personnel. We all know that, you know, a lot of them around rural areas here in Pennsylvania. There's a lot that are volunteer, and they do that 24/7 to, you know, help, help out the people in their community. And also just want to reiterate that, you know, the 911 dispatchers all throughout Pennsylvania, they are, they go, they go unnoticed because they're not out in the field, but they're the very start of the EMS and Fire Emergency Service responses. So they, they need to be recognized also because they, they do a fantastic job. And they deal with the same stress, taking the, taking the calls that the 911 centers has the emergency responders do. Because just imagine when somebody's calling in that they're, they need an ambulance for their loved one who's collapsed, not breathing, no heartbeat. You know, they're, they're talking to them, they're not only dispatching us, but they're talking them through what they need to do, like as far as CPR and whatnot. So it is very important to recognize them. And also just want to reiterate this, that our Sheriff's Department team, they are, they are part of that first response system. When they're out and about in the community, serving papers, doing what they do, serving warrants, they do carry an AED and a response bag with them and with Narcan in it. And when that call comes out for an unresponsive person, possible, we refer to it as an echo call because that's how it's coded, and that's how it's dispatched over the radio system. Basically, any first responder who's available to help is encouraged to do that, and our Sheriff's Department does. They will respond. They have made it before the EMS crews have made it there, administered Narcan, started ventilations and/or CPR. So I just, I just wanted to recognize them also for.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your service as a first responder.
Thanks.
I'm going to hit 250 PA, 250 PA updates. We're going to have our valid dedication ceremony today at 11 o'clock down on the course of the lawn, so I'd be stick around. And after that, we're going to have a screening of our video documentary in the gymnasium. So you're welcome to stick around for that. We're excited. We're going to have about 60 or 70 school students join us today, so that's thrilling. Today, we're going to announce the America 250 PA Grant Award finalists. We had a pool of money that we earmarked for America 250 celebration, and we decided to host a mini-grant program. So we put the word out for those, for any groups that wanted to host a patriotic or commemorative celebration. We have 20-some entries. Our funding allowed us to fund nine of those. The first of one, which was our first entry, was the America 250 Patriotic Concert, a concert of remembrance and celebration. This is going to be a community concert on 9/11/26. It will celebrate the 20, it will commemorate the 25th anniversary of 9/11 and also America 250 Celebration. So Barb, thanks for your leadership on that.
Thank you.
The Wolfcocks Festival Committee wants to purchase a large 20 by 30-foot The Wilcox Festival Committee wants to purchase a large twenty by thirty-foot flag. Um, they want to have a group event at their hometown festival on May, uh, twenty-third. They want to have people carrying the flag. They'll surround the flag with people and carry it. Um. They, and then they're going to drape the flag, um, over a fence. They're going to. Allow families to take their photos with the flag. And then they're also going to march with the flag in their Memorial Day parade. The concert choir of Elk County has submitted an application for a community concert, uh, to be held May fifteenth and sixteenth at the Red Burn. Um, our funds will be used to purchase music for that. Horton Township is hosting a booth at Brockway's Fourth of July Celebration. They want to purchase necklaces, pins, bracelets, bunting, flags, and temporary tattoos, uh, to hand out at that, at their booth. The Ridgeway Chainsaw Carver's Rendezvous, which always brings a lot of people into the county, um, wants to use money. Requested fund to purchase a banner for Kirk courthouse loan. Uh, using the A two fifty P A logo during their rendezvous in April. The Girl Scouts of Western PA Troop Two Eight Eight One Six in Johnsonburg. Uh, wants to host a community event to attain their Girl Scout Silver Award. By hosting a trivia contrast, contest. Which sounds like a fun idea. The funds will be used to purchase prizes. Benet's Valley Senior Set Citizens want to have a two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration ice cream social with entertainment. Prizes and, and, um, ener- entertainment and prizes in the summer of twenty twenty-six. Ice cream social. The Fox Township Community Park has a great idea, um, similar to our veterans banners that you see along the streets. They want to have, they want to use funds for, purchase twenty banners. To display at the park in, in Jersey with America Two Fifty Fox celebrates and then have. Um, elementary student artwork on each one. So that's really a cool idea. Then the Ridgway Elk Chamber of Commerce, um, requested funding, uh. To place a wrap on the ten-by-fourteen foot billboard on Route two nineteen and a three-by-five wrap at the Welcome Center. And use the America Two Fifty P A logo, um, on their membership claim. So Calvin here came up with a great logo. Uh, for us. Yay, Calvin. It actually says Ridgway Elk County Chamber of Commerce says Happy Birthday, America. Then it has the A two fifty P A Elk County logo. And then it says, come celebrate with us in twenty twenty-six. So we thought that was a great idea. So we're happy. We got this money spread out, uh, around the county. Got some great projects. We had a lot of applications, so it was a tough decision, but we're thrilled with it. So. We have to approve these first. So, uh, we sent notices out to these nine, um, finalists and invited them to a meeting next Thursday. To present their programs at a special meeting. So we hope you can be here, Marilyn, get some more information. We're excited about it. But first we need to approve these for selection.
I would make the motion to approve the finalists. For selection to be presenting next Thursday.
Anyway, okay, motion carries. Thank you. We'll see you next Thursday.
So I was, I was approved for, as a finalist.
As a finalist, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we're excited. We're excited.
Yes, and I'll see you in the park.
Yeah, I, I'm a.
And Matt, everybody else.
Yeah, we should all be there. Um, I think that's all we have. Please continue to pray for our military personnel, our families and our children. Their teachers, all elected officials, and peace in the world. Questions from the press.
Yes, I have two. First one, uh, is for Pat. Can you tell me how many employees are being covered under that healthcare plan? If you don't know, you can email me.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and four, a hundred and five, somewhere in there. I, I'll email your number up, um. I'm going to get back to you on something else there, so.
Okay. And the second thing is, I wondered if we had time for a quick picture of the green light, um, veterans.
Oh, sure.
Can you do that now?
Yes, let's do that now. Um, look for a motion. The questions from taxpayers.
No, you answered my question.
Thank you. Me, motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.
Courtney, I'm going to use your folder for.
That's fine. Yes, not a problem.